Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 14th River Falls City Council. I'm sorry, January 14th. Let's try that again. It's the 28th, actually. The 28th River Falls City Council meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have a roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Houdin.
Here.
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 Eleven. Okay.
Okay, next we have approval of the minutes from the January 14th meeting.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have approval of the bills with Mr. Gagne.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $5,433,077.12, subject to comptroller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience, does anybody like to stand up? Talk about, now would be the time. Okay. We'll move on to, we got a strategic plan report. Brent Johnson, our Assistant to the City Administrator is going to give us a little update on this.
Alright, good evening, Mayor and council members. Let me just get this all set up here. So, we're going to talk about the third and fourth quarters of the strategic plan by annual update tonight. So, this is just kind of go over, kind of provide a year-end review of the strategic plan and the objectives that the city has set so far for 2019. And then I've also provided two handouts for you tonight that kind of go along with the PowerPoint tonight as well. So, if you want to follow along in that sense. So, 2019 is the first full year of the city strategic plan with our current strategic plan goals and are also included first full year of the 2019 to 2021 strategic initiatives. So then, in that, we've incorporated those new initiatives into our strategic plan as well. So, in the beginning of 2018, that incorporated the 2018, it was the administrative work plan. So, we switched over from the administrative work plan to the strategic initiatives and that we're incorporating those into this one as well. So, we'll go on to the next one. So, in this, this is one of four objectives with their goals from the strategic plan. So, the first one is connected community. And so, this is where we had an engaged community. There were a list of items that we wanted to see if we can, performance measures if you want to say. One of them was Facebook likes and increasing that for our main city page. And so, we increased our Facebook likes by about 18%, or that was about 669 likes over the course of the year. For the city's website, we had about a 1% increase overall to about 202,000 unique visitors. We only had one election last year, and that was the spring election. So, we kind of based our performance measurements off of that. But we did see an increase of, saw 22% voter turnout, which is really good for a spring election. In the library, we saw about a 22% increase in the self-checkout lane there. And we saw about a 343% increase in the Flipster, which is a application that the city, or that the library uses. And then we also saw about a 29% increase in their tumble book application. And then with the progress on the Kenny Corridor Plan, the Kenny Corridor Collaborative or the Kenny CC formed this summer. That was one of the major goals of the Kenny Corridor Plan was to get a public-private partnership committee set up there. And then, the city and the Kenny CC signed an MOU back in August. So, that kind of laid out some of the groundwork for that partnership going forward. And then, as you can see there, they submitted for a $7,500 grant back in December of last year. So, with economic vitality, we saw a lot of activity in the last two years. The 4.7 million increment might seem a little small, but that was just because Anchor Paper was just getting on board. It wasn't fully implemented in the assessment there yet. And then, so far since 2018, we've actually met our goal of over 20 million increment. We've had about 22.7 million in increment since 2018. So, we've done very good in that aspect. And then, we have about 38 acres of land available for development. And then, with one of the handouts I provided you tonight, it kind of goes over the Maxfield Housing Study and then kind of the goals that were set up in that for units to try and attain for, by 2030. And so far, we've, in 2019, we, there were 224 permitted housing units. So, it should just be noted that one, a unit does not equal one-on-one. So, it can be like a, an apartment room that has three rooms in it, per se. So, it's just the number of units there. With financial sustainability, so I should note here, while it says only 47% at the end of December 31st, 2019, the city won't officially know until the end of February because that's when we'll close out our revenue and expense accounts. We'll finalize those, I guess you should say. So, we'll have a better answer to that at that time. So, this one clarifies, right, I would assume, yep. And then, with quality municipal services, while we didn't meet the official target for 90%, I will say that's with an excellent or good ranking there. So, while we might have a higher percentage that might have said that they were neutral with the services, we've actually scored in the last three years, 87, 88, and 87% in that satisfactory ranking there. So, we've done very well in that regards. And then, for feasibility studies, we heard one of them tonight at our workshop regarding EMS. But we also conducted an assessment, feasibility analysis as well on which council went with accurate appraisal for assessing services from 2020 to 2022. So, we'd like to hear some feedback on staff on the progress. This is, we switched to a biannual report. So, I'll be back up here again in July or August, kind of giving a recap of the first and second quarters of 2020. But with that, is when I asked, is there any questions that you may have for me or staff members in the audience today?
Anybody have any questions? No? No, I don't, I guess not, Brent. Thanks, guys. I like these reports. You guys are doing a good job keeping up on everything and keeping us informed.
Of course.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2020-01, amending the official zoning map and future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of River Falls for land generally located between West Division Street, Clark Street, and the Kinnik River. This is a second reading and disposition. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2020-01.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, again, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2020-02, amending section 10 dot 12 dot 030 of the official parking control map. For East Walnut Street, no parking, 2:30 to 6:30, 2:30 through 6:30 a.m. And this is a second reading and disposition. And is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Okay. We will close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the ordinance 2020-02, amending the official parking control map.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Again, we'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2020-03, amending section 10 dot 12 dot 030, the official parking control map. This is 14, this is for 1415 Bartosh Lane, which will be no parking from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, except holidays and school vacations. There again, this is a second reading. Is there anybody in the audience has anything like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval, number five, ordinance 2020-03, regarding official parking control maps for 1415 Bartosh Lane.
Second.
Questions or comments on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll move on to the consent agenda. First is, we'll acknowledge the following minutes. River Falls Housing Authority from December 12th. The West Central Wisconsin Biosolids Facility Commission from 9/19, 10/17, and 11/7. Powerful Choices from 10/3, 11/14, and 12/12. The EMS Advisory Board from 10/28. Historic Preservation Commission from 12/11. The Planning Commission from 12/3. And River Falls Public Library from 12/2. And the next one is a resolution approving the 2020 through 2022 contract with Zili's Tree Service. This would award a tree trimming contract to Zili's Tree Service for the years 20 through 22. Does anybody want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve poll number eight. Uh, eight, A, sorry.
A, okay.
6A.
Okay.
Kind of something different here. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull consent agenda number seven.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll take a motion for the rest.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve consent agenda, item 6B through G. And that's it, I guess. That's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Gagne, you polled 6A.
That's the River Falls Housing Authority, 12/12/19. Just want to reach out and thank the Housing Authority and the Police Department on proactive work. Has come to my attention that they're taking proactive measures in some of the housing areas that we have had some history of issues in. I know it's tough on all sides because it is a tenant-housing relationship, but then also on the Police Department. I think our Police Department does a fantastic job of getting out and reacting to some of these issues. And I know we don't want to be a police city, per se, but I think you guys do a great job of balancing that. One thing I do want to bring up, I live right across the street on Kennedy Street. I'm very familiar with a neighborhood that we have. I'm familiar with a lot of the people. I get people that call me and talk to me about issues in the community, not just housing, but the whole neighborhood. And December 28th, we had three rounds shot off in our neighborhood.
Mr. Gagne, does this have anything to do with the minutes?
It does.
Okay.
Because this is a Housing Authority issue as well, and it will come in our future. It's not reflected in this minutes, but I want it to be reflected.
Okay, well, this is about the minutes from this.
I do want it to be reflected.
You can, you can talk about it after, but it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the Housing Authority minutes from 12/12.
Yep. So, is it your position that you don't want to talk about this issue?
No, I said you can talk about it, but we're talking about, you want to talk about the minutes from 12/12. You can talk about it, that's fine.
Yep.
But let's, okay, these minutes first, and you can come back and say something.
I have four. Mr. Mayor, I approve for the approval of 6A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Downing, you polled number seven?
Resolution approving 2020 to 2022 contract with Zili's Tree Service. My question is, I noticed they're coming down from Bruce, Wisconsin. Is there a lack of technical workers that can do this kind of work considering it's tree management and regarding hazard awareness?
Yeah. Councilmember Downing? So, this was also brought up at the Utility Advisory Board meeting as well. This is a specialized service. The city of River Falls also has tree trimming in other areas of town and other tree services, Savitree and things like that. It was brought up, that would be nice if we could use some efficiencies and duplicate those services. But this is a specialized service. There's specialized training to trim both around distribution electric lines and transmission distribution electric lines. So, this is a very specialized tree service because of the electric component to it and the safety requirements.
So, you'd say that there is a lack of competitive bids for this particular one?
That's accurate in this area.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Mr. Mayor, I move approval for resolution approving 2020-2022 contract with Zili's Tree Service.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment if I could, Mr. Downing. There was a lot of discussion at Utility about this. In fact, I think it was probably fifteen or two.
Forty minutes.
Forty minutes. We beat this one to death in Utility, and that did come up. We explored that, and I would reinforce what Director Westhouse said, that there's just nobody else out there provides service.
Thank you, Mr. Marson.
And now, Mr. Gagne, you wanted to talk?
Yeah, I did want to bring up an issue regarding December 28th. There was three shots that went off in the neighborhood. The facts happened to be, it was a suspected drug dealing. One guy pulled a gun, another guy pulled a gun, and shot off three rounds. Thankfully, nobody got hurt. The reason I want to bring this up publicly and not behind closed doors is, we have a fantastic community. We have a really safe community, generally speaking, compared to maybe right across the border into the Twin Cities. But I believe it's the Housing Authority's job under their tenant agreements to make sure that they're providing a safe, habitable environment. One, yes, they do background checks on folks. But what happens to the folks that move in after that one tenant moved in or the family moved in? Or about the people that are extending their guest stay? I think the Housing Authority needs to take that to light. And I thank the Police Department, the City Administration, and the Housing Authority for finally starting to take a closer look at this. They've identified that they have some issues over there. They're thinking about putting cameras up, maybe doing some more proactive checks. And I really hope to follow up on that and see it done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. We got to go back to the last resolution that Mr. Downing had pulled. I forgot to ask for a vote on that.
Yeah.
So, back to, back to resolution 20, approving the 2020 contract with... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. Ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance 2020-04, annexing and rezoning of 1110 West Maple Street. This is the first reading. This would be for, this would be for annexing and rezoning a parcel at 1110 West Maple Street in the town of River Falls. An annexation petition was filed by the property owners, Travis and Abby Marson, on November 25th as a direct annexation by unanimous approval. The second reading is February 11th. Does the council have any questions on this?
No.
Okay. Next is ordinance 2020-05, amending the official traffic control map. This would be for no left turns from Union Street onto North Main Street. This is the first reading of the ordinance, amending the official map, creating a no-left turn from Union Street onto North Main Street. And the second reading again will be on February 11th. Anybody have any questions on this one?
Is it our intention to put a divider there in Main Street so that vehicles can't turn left or just a sign?
That's a good question. Just signage.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess I got something.
Yep.
So, kind of based off of Paige's question there. This is just coming past the library, taking a left onto South Main. But people will still be able to come from northbound going south and take a left to the library. So, that divider would kind of interrupt, I would think.
Right.
Diver there stays?
My apologies. Good questions. The divider that's on North Main stays intact. You would be able to make a left turn from North Main onto Union, going to the library. It's taking the left turn from Union onto North Main, where there's a bit of a conflict now. That island sticks out just into a portion of it, causing traffic to potentially hit. And we've had that happen on occurrence. Part of the reason those bollards have been added. But it puts that traffic light, which it's again a pretty sensitive intersection, puts that traffic light in peril. So, we're trying to avoid that being taken out again, like it was last winter and one of those late spring storms from happening again if we can.
I just thought it was a great question by all of my page and just wanted to kind of follow up on the clarification. Thanks.
Mike, do we have some sense for where people are going to turn around then?
Yeah, I think the thought is they would probably just go up to Main and Division at that intersection itself and go that way.
Okay.
So, it's not a common area to turn. Most of them leaving there are going right. That doesn't change. It's just the left that we're going to try to limit.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, next is resolution approving the specific implementation plan for 1300 South Main Street. And I will take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of resolution approving specific implementation plan for 1300 South Main.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I do have some, but does anybody else have any?
Not right now.
1300 South Main Street, it's right in my district. Used to live right across the street from it, still live in that same neighborhood. Just got a couple of things to read here. As I previously mentioned at other meetings, I believe this project is a great addition to the South Main Corridor. And as we have seen with other Gerard properties and projects, I have no doubt this project will be great, much-needed improvement to our community. I believe this project and location has been a long time coming, and I will provide, and will provide homes for our residents. As per the sidewalk on East Johnson in the packet, something I talked about with Councilman, or City Administrator Simpson, that I definitely feel and know that there's a sidewalk needed from South Main all the way up to at least Sycamore. It's a dangerous intersection. That pole and the brush on the corner, it kind of hinders that corner. Not to mention, there is no parking signs on that post. It is overgrown, so a lot of people still park there. The other night in that right-hand south side of that area right there, there was a car parked there. So, I think this will kind of clean up the area, make it more uniform, and give people more of a safety element there and get people off that road. In the summer, we get a lot of kids walking right down the middle of the street right there. Not we can do to stop them, but at least we give them a sidewalk and a clear view for the traffic. Speed reduction. In the packet, it was also noted that speed reduction will be coming before council for South Main Street right there. I believe that, I have one big ask. My ask is that the Police Department controls our parking and traffic control, that they look into a speed limit reduction implementation plan that controls changes near 1300 Main prior to groundbreaking. And the reason I ask this is that there's a lot of traffic there already. East Johnson, West Johnson come out in different areas. You get a lot of people going 35 miles an hour up over that hill. And if they got a lot of distractions, there's going to be a lot of gawking. We know, we all do it, right? There's people pull over, a traffic accident or something, new building going up. People are interested, they're going to want to do that. I would ask that that traffic change be from Cemetery Road all the way up through Foster, because that's about that same area, that's 35 right now. It's just going to slow people down. Right at East Johnson, by Quick Trip and the Shell Gas Station there, we get a lot of people crossing there. And if they have all this extra distraction, people are going to get hit. Things are going to get slammed into, and I just want to make sure that we're providing that area of safety. I'm sure our City Administration and Police Department will be on that, but that's just my ask. Thanks.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is resolution approving the specific implementation plan for Peregrine Terrace. There again, I'll take a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the resolution approving specific implementation plan for Peregrine Terrace.
Second.
Questions? Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I have a conflict of interest. My employer is involved with the developer, so I have to abstain.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next one is a resolution accepting the campus corridor concept. And I'll take a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of the resolution adopting campus corridor concept.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make a couple of comments. One, just to note that this is a plan and not an official city planning document. So, while, and I believe there's a lot of really good ideas in this plan, but certainly not everybody on the Plan Commission agreed with everything in the plan. And the Plan Commission had an opportunity to comment on this plan, but Plan Commission members were not part of the committee that actually drafted the plan itself. So, however, it does, it does provide a really good set of concepts that we, that the city staff can use when speaking with people who are looking to develop various properties. And I think it's better to be proactive, and we can always, you know, yea or nay on specific parts of this as we, as we move along.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next is Administrator's report. If anybody has anything for Scott? Scott, you have anything for us?
Congratulations to Amy Peterson, who's been hired as the city's Community Development Director. Amy is a University of Wisconsin-Steven Point and University of Minnesota-Duluth grad, certified planner and LEED accredited professional. As you know, she's worked for the city for four years, most recently as our Development Services Director. In her new role in the Community Development Director, we have, we're putting some areas of the city together in development services, and that includes planning, engineering, inspections, project management, and economic development. So, I'm looking forward to continuing our work together.
One second, Scott. Amy, stand up so everybody knows who to come and complain to. Congratulations.
Amy was serving in that Development Services Director position, which was a key, key to keeping things together. So, now, her first challenge as Community Development Director is to try to figure out how to replace the position she was in. And so, we'll be forthcoming with some of, some of that information for the council. We did have some awards presented by the fire chief at their annual awards dinner. I just wanted to mention those to the council. Battalion Chief Evan Larson was named 2019 Firefighter of the Year. In addition, we had several milestone in the department. These are pretty incredible to me every time I read them. Forty-five years, we had two people recognized for 45 years of service, Gary Alarante and Gene McCann. And for 30 years, we had four firefighters recognized for 30 years of service. Bill Cernahouse, Troy Malmer, Mike Moody, and Ed Nicholson. So, appreciate their long service. I don't believe we allowed any of them to retire. So, hopefully, they'll be around for 50 and 35-year celebrations. Also want to note that, as the council has heard before, we do have an emphasis in trying to identify non-property tax revenues to try to fund priorities of the city. One of the priorities we've had is to try to keep our taxi service going. And we were able to, Bridget, he applied for a $32,000 grant towards a new taxi van. We were, we found out about that opportunity on May 31st, and she got the application. The application was due June 7th. She was able to get that in, and we were successful, so appreciate that work. If you don't get a chance to hear me enough, you'll see me, you have an opportunity at 7:30 a.m. The State of the City address at the River Falls Golf Course. The mayor and I will be there to provide some updates and address the community at the Chambers Business Breakfast. If the council, we're assuming most of the council is interested in ten, but if you could just let Brent or Christie know that they can make sure that you're RSVP'd for the event and get a good spot to hear the State of the City. So, I'd be happy to take any questions that the council might have.
Anybody got anything for Scott?
I just have a question for Scott. Can you kind of expound on the changes at the federal level? They passed the tobacco policy changes that it's restricted to anyone 21 and up. How does that impact our city?
Very little, with the exception of... Very little, with the exception of retailers, many retailers have voluntarily started to implement that themselves. From a city enforcement perspective, it does not affect us because there's nothing in this latest ruling from the federal government that would allow our officers to enforce those rules. They're not laws, and we enforce laws of the state of Wisconsin, so I don't know if the chief has anything to add to that, but essentially, not much for us to do, but it certainly has changed some retailing practices in the community, which is, which is generally perceived as positive. The access to the materials is a little bit more limited than it, than it was in the past, but it's still not illegal to possess tobacco products if you're under 21, and we're not changing our store checks or anything like that based on this, we're waiting for the state of Wisconsin to determine what they, they have to basically change the laws. Theoretically, the council could also pass their own local ordinance, I think would likely be enforceable if you wanted to do that, but we haven't drafted that or heard from the council that you want to do that at this point. So right now, we're kind of waiting, monitoring, but there isn't much change. But you will see some change in the community because some of the retailers have voluntarily, have set corporate policies that said we're going to stop selling to this age, and I think, I'm probably going to get the wrong retailer, but I won't name any names, but I think we had a retailer in town that had already, well before this, this change, had already posted their stores nationwide saying we're not going to sell it to under 21, so.
So if the city wanted to go forward with just doing checks, we would just have to make an ordinance to do checks to be in compliance with the federal law? I mean, we could adopt a law that would do that instead of just prohibiting it, just...
Yeah, we would, we would likely have to, I mean, do a little bit of research, but I think we do have some general home rule powers under health, welfare, and safety to determine as a council that you don't, you want it to be illegal in the city of River Falls to, for retailers to sell a product at an age. I, I would guess that would probably not be, I don't think there's a state law that prohibits us from doing that right now, but I think we're hoping to avoid a web of confusing regulations, laws, and other things, and hopefully the state of Wisconsin will determine what they want to do, and then we'll enforce it, a universal law.
I'm not certain, but I believe that it's prohibited under Wisconsin statutes from enforcing a stricter standard, but I'd have to look at that more closely.
I just, I guess I just found it in the memo that Brant provided us, under state, under state law change, I don't want to take anything out of context here, so I'll read the whole paragraph. "Under state law changes, Wisconsin law enforcement, which includes River Falls Police Department, can only continue to issue citations to retailers who sell tobacco products to anyone under the age of 18, and cannot issue citations for tobacco, to tobacco retailers, vape slash E N D S shops, etc., to anyone aged 18 to 20 years of age." This is because local municipalities are exempt from enacting stronger laws than the state, Wisconsin state statute, and then it quotes the statute as 134.66 sub 5. Only the FDA has the authority to issue citations to those retailers who sell to anyone aged 20, 18 to 20. So this is something we can enforce it anyway, is that a fair statement, chief?
That is fair, and also, it's recommended that if there are complaints that a particular store in River Falls is selling to under 21, that those complaints and concerns go to the FDA, and I was told that they would send out an investigator, that they will investigate complaints, so the FDA is in charge, and they are the only body, as of right now, that can enforce it.
Thank you.
So as one council member, it's up, my, my thought that the state really needs to take action so we can enforce a law more uniformly in Wisconsin. Thanks.
Anybody else got anything for Scott? Okay, move on to the Comptroller's Report.
This is the Comptroller's Report for December 2019. Preliminary year and general fund revenues were $11,134,618, with expenditures of $10,203,500 for a net surplus of $934,582. Of this amount, $203,054 is expected to be advanced to the Sterling Ponds and River Falls Industrial Park Tax Increment Funds. Some additional revenues and expenses will likely be allocated to 2019 as final invoices and expenses are received and recorded.
I got a quick question, if I could, I don't know if this is appropriate for the Comptroller, probably more for, for Mike Stifter. We're doing great versus budget, or versus year-to-date on streets, we're about $300,000 to the good. Obviously, it depends on Mother Nature and how much white stuff falls from the sky, but what's your crystal ball say, Mike?
Well, keep it in mind, last year at this time, winter had been very mild, this was the start of about a three-day stretch of 20 to 30 below zero weather, and then February was a historic month, as well as the first two weeks of March, so we were just getting started at this time last year. Forecast, though, right now looks like, you know, mild weather through early next week. February and March look like a more kind of average to a little bit below average, precip looks about average, so right now, it looks like we'll, we'll do well to finish out this year. And we finished out 2019 generally okay.
Yeah.
We had a new hauling contract, we only contracted with them once, right at the end of December, near the new year, and so we, we got out pretty well from 2019, having incurred a lot last spring, but yeah, we're tracking okay so far this season.
Our salt supply and road treatment supplies?
Salt supply, we're in good shape, we just took delivery of 300 tons, we used about 450 in a season, but early delivery allows us 300 tons per contract, so first week in January, we got that. That's in the bunker right now, would be enough to last us in any season usually, and take us into the fall, and then we have another 200 tons we can take in March or April, which we would intend to do just to have for next year, in case something changes, it's an annual contract typically. And then we make our own salt brine, so we're in good shape with it. It's our own salt that we use and water that we provide, and then we have some specialty, you know, chemicals and things, more for colder conditions, and we have a good supply of those too. So yeah, we're situated well for an average to even a below-average remaining, hopefully few weeks of winter.
And not to get off topic, but every time I hear from a resident, they can't say enough good things about the streets and how quickly we get them plowed, so thank you and thank your staff.
Well, we're in now pothole season, so we're starting to, but we did have St. Croix County in last week to do some spray patch, and we'll have them in as, as they're available, but yeah, thank you for that.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, let's see, I have one announcement, I got a proclamation here for Big Brothers and Big Sisters Thank You Mentor Day. Whereas every child deserves to achieve success in life, and whereas mentoring through Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Northwestern Wisconsin provides children facing adversity with strong and enduring professionally-supported relationships that change their lives for the better forever, and whereas children with a mentor set higher goals for themselves, and whereas children with a mentor are less likely to use drugs and alcohol, and are more likely to reach higher levels of education, and whereas each year, hundreds of caring adults volunteer their time to better the lives of children in our community as mentors, and whereas the year 2020 marks the 19th year of celebrating January as National Mentoring Month. Now therefore, I, Dan Toland, Mayor of the City of River Falls, do hereby proclaim January 30th, 2020, as Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Thank You Mentor Day, and I urge everyone in River Falls to thank their mentors and those who made a positive impact while growing up, given under my hand and seal of the City of River Falls this 28th day of January 2020. Move to adjourn. Oops, sorry, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.